There we go.
All right, then. Peter, that's it.
Excellent. Well, it is six oh one. Can I call this regular meeting of City Council to order? Roll call, please.
Uh, Councilmember third.
President.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Oh, perfect. Um, Councilmember Best.
Here.
Um, Mayor Green.
He here.
And Councilmember in the round.
Here.
Councilmember Phil.
President.
And Councilmember Edwards and Bass.
Thank you. All right, it is time for the optional pledge of allegiance or moment of silence. And please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our individual liberty, justice, and
All right, it is a robust agenda, but um I would entertain a motion to approve it unless there are major changes.
Well, no, it's a good agenda.
Yes, seconds.
All in favor? Bye. Any opposed? All right. Now it's time for public comments about items not on the agenda. Again, so you sign in.
Then Mayor and City Council members, I came um here on the fourteenth of November twenty twenty-three, and obviously some of you, some of the members were not seated as City Council members. And my concern was illegal building in the city of Leadville. And I asked Ben Meyer, you know, if he was a code enforcement officer. Um, he mentioned that the um community service officers were the code enforcement officer, and I was told to um send all my information to the planning director. Um, that was six months ago. We sent five illegal buildings in November. And as far as I can figure out, nothing's really much has been done. Yes, um the code enforcement officers have been trained, and there's been a procedure in place. But there's so much illegal building going on in this town, it's unbelievable. Um, just up on East Seventh Street, a house that was in the, is in the historic district was resided this weekend. Um, I don't know how you control everything, you know, man, I mean, I, I could give you fifty illegal buildings in town, I'm not going to, because I don't want to hurt what we're planning director or the building department. I've even been to speak to, you know, to Anne at the building department. I can't get any um traction either, she won't come back. Um, I've confirmed that they don't have permits. I mean, we're talking about even fire, fire code violations where people are building into the setbacks, um, you know, or adding onto the house and keeping them, I mean, extending them um into setbacks of, you know, the three foot setbacks, um, you know, um, um, garages, um illegally converted to ADUs. I mean, I know we have a housing problem, but you know, if there's a fire or someone can't get out, and I mean, otherwise we should not even have codes and maybe just eighteen eighties, you know, and everything was like that because, um, yeah, I know, it's, um, you know, I mean, in the historic district, but my understanding is that if you can see something from the front end, if it's on the side, you have to go to the historic society and get a, um, what's it, a certificate of appropriateness, you know? So, um, you know, I mean, and all, the code's been changed, but you know, and maybe some people don't know, but like siding, you used to be able to side with locked up materials, while now the code is, if you do more than two hundred foot, you have to get a, you know, permit. Um, you know, and obviously in the historic district, you have to get a certificate of appropriateness. I mean, there's so much of this going on, I mean, I don't know how to, it's three minutes.
Oh, I, I I was just late.
I just came to say, say that to you because in November I came here and, um, was my concerns. Um, I haven't seen any traction also. It seems like
Craig, will you, just for, because it is three minutes now?
Yeah.
Would you just state your whole name for the councilor, if you don't know your address?
Craig Paul, three one five East Seventh Street.
Um, I will say, I don't know if it's because of you, but illegal permitting has appeared on the planning director's reports to us. Um, so I think something
Well, well, sorry, um, so they were on the reports. Um, and I did get some emails from the planning director, Mark, giving me some feedback. Since then, they got on the reports, and I don't know what's happened about them, the illegal building is not, is married. I think this time as well.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public? Yes, Steve, please.
Okay, it's on the five there. My name is Steve, I should live at one thirty-one East Third Street. Um, in tandem with what this gentleman was talking about, I think there is a real problem with selective enforcement in town. Um, I understand that, you know, we have to look at constitutional issues, we have to look at institutional issues, and we have to look at personal issues. If someone quoted a Time magazine article from New York, I don't know, but it seems like um, the city has a long history of doing slapdash enforcement, and a lot of times it, it really doesn't come across as fair. And um, it hurts people, um, because sometimes they lean on one person and other people seem to get away with it. So this issue came up personally with me again this summer, last summer. And I think I got the told that it's, it's a process from the enforcement officer, and I made contact with the person that was in charge of the enforcement officers. He insisted that it was a process. And it, the process hasn't borne any fruit as far as I can see, other than me being upset over the violation as it um encroaches on an agreement I had with that property owner. And also, um, it's up against my property and my fence, and it's degrading my fence. And I'm hoping we can get on that this summer and have that individual remove all that stuff that's illegally stored, um, and um, at least get one, one of those things off of my mind. Um, I would also like to thank one of the members of the community, um, for, um, Nick is his name, I'm not sure of his last name, I'd have to look at my watch there. Um, that are like last case. He helped repair my roof, so um, I really much appreciate someone coming forward and helping with that. So, um, thank you kindly.
Thank you very much. Thank you both for your input. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to comment on items, excuse me, not on the agenda? Anyone online? Just raise your hand. Okay. Moving along, we'll go to presentations and discussions. City administrators report.
All right, so, um, thank you for handing the microphone over to me. Just, um, a handful of updates from uh me. And uh, shout out to Sarah Edwards, who was just announced to be the new executive director of the Tabor Opera House Foundation. Sarah has, as you all know, been very active in the community and has been on the Tabor Opera House Board for a number of years, and also has been serving as the county communications director. So we're very, very excited to work with Sarah Edwards on that wonderful city building and the renovations that have been going on. And I'd like to take a moment to also thank Sarah Day for all of her labor of love that she has put in to the Tabor Opera House Foundation, and also in, prior to that at the city, to ensure the longevity of that building. Uh, she certainly has put in a ton of work, and Sarah Edwards has big shoes to fill. So I know you're gonna hear um from potentially both Sarah's later uh in this meeting regarding the Phase Three Construction Award, but I just wanted to um congratulate Sarah Edwards and thank Sarah Day. Um, in line with talking about Sarah's, I would like to introduce you all to Sarah Bushman. Uh, she has just turned on her, our camera. Uh, Sarah Bushman has joined the city as of Monday uh as our administrative assistant, and we are very excited to have her on board. She joins us from Pitt County, and I want to say she has a fabulous background in interest in local government. She's pursuing two master's degrees and one of them in public policy, so I think she's going to to fit right in, and so we welcome her, and we tossed her into our first couple of meetings already. And I can't remember, Sarah, if I, if I warned you that I, I would ask you maybe to say a couple of words about yourself if you would like to, to the council.
Thank you very much, Lori. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you all. Um, it's lovely to meet everyone virtually. I hope to meet um everyone more in person in the coming weeks. I'm very excited to join your team here, and I know um it's gonna be, it's gonna be a great fit. I'm really looking forward to all the projects that we're working on, and you have a great group of people here already in office, and so I'm just really excited to work with them.
And uh, I, I don't know if it's appropriate to um, to embarrass our planning director, but we did, we did have Sarah have her first um surprise mandatory meeting uh earlier today, if you haven't all figured out, I have a mandatory meeting on the calendar, and it usually happens like an hour before we show up with cupcakes for someone's birthday, so I just want to shout out to Mr. Lechance, it was his birthday on Sunday. So we had surprise cupcakes, and now uh Ms. Bushman is completely aware of any mandatory meeting is usually someone's birthday, so. I, I don't know, Mayor, I think we got you that, on that one twice already.
Yes, I'm completely gullible. I was like, oh my gosh, I better show up. I come into City Council, talk about paychecks, and then there's cupcakes.
Yeah, it's usually something really onerous, like we need to discuss your paychecks, or you know, some sort of, you know, very heavy topic, but anyway. Um, on other good news, uh Ms. Bushman has offered to help us on this as well, the website. So we reviewed um a very close to final design. Uh, it feels like it was a long time ago, but it might have just been yesterday, but it's looking fabulous. We have just a few final tweaks. And Mr. Cummins is gonna meet again with each of the departments to go over their design to make sure it has every, um, everything they need. Obviously, we can update it as we go forward. But Ms. Bushman has offered to kind of do a consistency check and make sure our style is the same. Uh, our platform is Civic Plus, and she has prior experience with that platform in her previous job, so uh, very excited about that. Um, in a couple of other updates, we, one of the other projects I was working on is a fleet management program. And this is something that we've needed in the city for a while. Where departments needed to purchase passenger vehicles in the past, they had kind of done it on their own, and we didn't have a great inventory of all of our vehicles, nor an assessment of our vehicles and their condition, their mileage, when they should be cycled out. So think in terms of the spreadsheet that uh Chief Daly has given you over the years that gives an estimated life for each vehicle. We'd like to have that for all of our passenger vehicles across the board for all of the city. And this has become especially important. It was a project that I, I wanted to hold off on for a little while, but we need to accelerate that because we have a number of police vehicles that require hundreds, if not thousands of dollars of repairs. And they are currently in the shop, and we need to make a decision as to whether or not to repair them or uh replace them. So we're working with Enterprise Fleet Management on a quote for that, and um they have been fantastic. Enterprise is a fleet management system that the county uses. So we are pursuing that sooner rather than later because we uh right now have to decide whether or not we're gonna have a patrol vehicle repaired, or if it's not worth the repair, we're gonna have to have it towed um back to Leadville. We can't leave it at the um, the repair place, so. That is just an update on, on other financial news. We are continuing to work on the Tabor Home. So I think I remember telling you a while back, uh, they had a boiler issue with some flooding, and um we had that work uh as the work was getting in progress to get that remediated, there was um asbestos in the flooring of that building. As they were doing those repairs, there was more water, uh, there was another water leak. Unfortunately, since then, we've had two more water leaks. Uh, one actually in the Tabor apartment, and then um, our finance director very astutely pointed out that our water bill was still insanely high for that property. And when uh we had our streets manager go out there a couple of times, we finally just told him to shut off the water, and we realized that the shower had broken in the, the actual home, not the apartment. So the good news is the water had been coming out, but it ended up in the shower. So there was not a significant amount of property damage, but I just want to give you a heads up, we are significantly going to exceed our budget for our repairs for uh the Tabor Apartment and Tabor Home for twenty twenty-four because of this. Now, we have made an insurance claim. I'm working with our um adjuster on that. I'm hoping that a lot of it is covered, but I am not positive at this point, and we have a list of some recommended repairs that we might do while uh the work is being done already by KW Construction. So just wanted to give you a heads up. No one likes to have bad news sprung on them at the end of the year. I just wanted to give you all a heads up that that might be coming. And with that, I'm happy to take questions.
Questions for the city administrator? Okay, thank you very much for the bad news.
Um, yeah, I was, maybe should have ended on the birthday, but I gotta work on my material.
Um, all right, let's move on to uh Excel Energy presenting their work for twenty twenty-four. Who do we have presenting for them?
Hi, guys. Um, I'm Blair McGary. I am the area manager for Leadville and Lake County. Um, I have been living and working and playing over in Summit County for about twenty years, so getting to know the area, um, my joke is that I'm finally over winter, is, does that make it so that I've made it, I'm a local now? Um, anyway, thanks for having me tonight. I really apologize for not being there in person. Just did not make it over the hill. Um, but I'm going to share screen, can you?
We can see it.
All right, so Leadville Natural Gas Project, again, Blair McGary, new area manager. Um, thanks for having me. Um, we are going to go over just the project overview tonight. Twenty twenty-four construction areas, um, the construction overview and process. Safety, um, always one of our top priorities at Excel Energy, and then the community engagement and outreach. Project overview, um, we continue to do, um, to construct a multi-year natural gas project in Leadville and Lake County, as I'm sure you all are aware. Um, the Leadville Natural Gas Project includes replacing, relocating, and installing new natural gas lines, replacing service lines that serve individual properties, and relocating natural gas meters as needed. That's appropriate. Um, allows us to continue to provide safe, this project allows us to continue to provide very reliable natural gas service and enhances um the system resiliency during those really cold days. Um, the project began in twenty nineteen and is expected to go through um next year, twenty twenty-five, with our construction season being May through October annually. Schedules are always subject to change. Um, twenty twenty-four construction areas, as you can see, um, kind of highlighted in orange here um through the middle of town. Um, the green areas is what has been completed in past years, and then um highlighted in purple is what we hope to complete in twenty-five. All right, so construction overview and impacts. Um, we install natural gas lines by open trenching and boring. Open trenching involves digging a trench and placing the natural gas line in there, in the trench. Um, boring uses a specialized machine to create an underground pathway um that the natural gas line is pulled, pulled or drilled through. Um, you're going to notice um marking of utility lines and utility survey holes, um, road and sidewalk closures, traffic control for those road and sidewalk closures, parking restrictions, construction noise, and temporary changes to how um one might access their property. Um, staying safe around our work areas. Again, we are committed to maintaining safe work areas for not only our communities, but also for the safety of our crews. Um, so we ask that people watch for our construction crews and equipment. Um, do not enter those construction areas. Please obey signage and directions from crews. Um, reduce speeds while traveling. Observe parking restrictions. Remain flexible as work progresses and work areas change. Um, as you guys know, and as Laurie just noted, uh, we're dealing with definitely some old infrastructure and um things pop up that can be unexpected. Um, I also will note, you know, I feel that often people in our construction areas looking for someone to physically speak to. Um, I, I do want to be that person, and so I please pass along my contact information um as appropriate because I really would let, love to intervene and speak with your community members as appropriate. Um, okay, the construction process, um, we have four phases. We are going to install natural gas mainlines. We are going to replace natural gas service lines. We are going to connect natural gas lines, and then we are going to restore those work areas. There, it, there will be several days or weeks between um each of these phases. So Phase One, um, install natural gas mainlines. We install new natural gas lines in roads and alleys. Once the natural gas line is placed, the crews will refill those excavated areas. Crews will close one lane of traffic or fully close the roads, um, fully close the alleys um during any natural gas line installation. There will be traffic impact, impacts and closures that may last for up to a week. It, it will be impactful. Phase Two, um, replace natural gas service lines and meters. Um, this is where we will replace the service lines on your property that connect to the natural gas lines in the road or alley. Um, we will also that um come in where, where appropriate and um replace the natural gas meter and relocate those meters um to protect them from any damage that may be caused by freezing snowmelt or ice. Um, crews may need to temporarily interrupt your natural gas service. This is typically is for less than one day, um, and then we'll reinstate your natural gas service and relight those appliances once that's, that work is complete. Crews will use site-specific traffic control to support service line replacement, and during work, we'll work, um, we will maintain access to affected properties um as safely as, as possible. Phase Three, connect to natural gas lines. Um, we will come back after we've, we've gone through Phase Two, we'll come back and to, to interconnect the natural gas lines to one another, forming the natural gas system. Crews create physical connections between natural gas lines by fusing them to one another using joints before then refilling those excavated areas. Um, this again is a time where crews need to fully close roads, intersections, and alleys as they connect these natural gas lines, and traffic impacts and closures could last for several, several days. Restoration work, um, we restore our work areas. So specialized restoration crews restore those affected area of the roads, alley, alleys in private properties to pre-construction conditions. Um, we'll work with the city to, to determine the extent of restoration required in roads and alleys. And then we will work directly with residents and property owners to help ensure private properties are, are restored to their um appropriate condition. Um, crews may need to fully close roads, intersections, and alleys as they do this final restoration work, but those traffic impacts are generally, generally last less than a day. Um, again, public safety is at the foundation of everything that we do, um, and really every decision that we make at Excel Energy. Um, we take a proactive approach to public safety by implementing safety measures before, before, during, and after construction. We'll talk about that in just a minute. Um, this project has been um designed to meet federal and state standards and safety requirements for installing, maintaining, and operating natural gas infrastructure. Um, but as always, if you ever suspect a natural gas leak, um, we ask that you leave your home or business immediately. Call nine one one, get to a safe spot, call nine one one, and then Excel Energy. Okay, um, how do we ensure that safety? Um, during construction and installation of a natural gas line, we implement a corrosion prevention system designed to eliminate metal loss. We verify our pipe, pipe wells using an independent third party. And then once the line has been installed and prior to putting it into service, we in, internally inspect the line and impo, and perform internal pressure tests to verify that line integrity. Um, during the lifetime of the natural gas line, we conduct annual hazard patrols and leak surveys, and regularly inspect th, those lines. Um, twenty-four seven monitoring of the line and other infrastructure through our staff gas center. Um, community engagement and outreach, um, interested stakeholders can reach us via our information line, um, email address or website. Um, this is monitored by a number of different people throughout the day, so again, we um encourage people to reach out. And then I know that Laurie and her team have my direct contact information too, and I would welcome that being shared with all of council um and any community members that, that um are interested as well. Um, we will provide weekly updates every Friday during construction. Um, updates will be posted to our website and information lines, so you can call in, and then also sent via email to subscribers, subscribers. Um, if construction will directly affect your property, we'll, we will reach out to you to identify dates and times that work well. Um, we also have ads running in the newspaper digitally and um in print um talking about affected construction areas. Um, affected residents were also notified via door hangers, and there has been some additional business outreach. I think that is it for me. What questions um can I answer?
Any questions for Ms. McGary?
I have a few.
Go ahead.
Thanks for your presentation. Um, what kind of coordination has happened between Excel and other utilities or even the city um regarding the potential to be efficient with things like repaving and um accessing other utilities that that might be available once, once you dug in?
Laurie, I don't, I see you unmuted. I don't know if you want me to jump in or if you want to start.
I'm happy to, to start, so we generally uh coordinate with Excel and the other utilities so that we are not repaving streets where they're headed. So uh, as you recall, um, for the council members who were on the council last year, uh Blair's predecessor, Nathan Steele, came and presented where the uh project was going to be for the next two years. And so when you're looking at the paving plan that we put together, which I'm working with our Streets Department manager on now, we avoid the streets where Excel is headed in. And then, you know, sometimes it's unfortunate, um, especially with Parkville, you know, unfortunately, sometimes we'll repave something and we'll have an emergency repair that's needed, and there's not much we can do about those. But um with that, Ms. McGary, I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah, I think that one opportunity that we have, um, you know, we do have, I, I gosh, I think they're weekly um planning meetings with um, you know, Andrew and Laurie and um some of the team members at the city. And I wonder if it makes sense, and Laurie and I can talk about this offline a little bit, but to include but to include, you know, maybe someone from Public Works or that planning that, you know, that's familiar with that paving plan and stuff in some of those conversations so that we're, we're doing the best that we can to coordinate there.
Thanks. Are, are Parkville and sanitation in the loop on the project plans?
Not to my knowledge, but we can definitely loop them in as stakeholders.
I don't know what specifically they might need or want to know, but it seems like a good idea in case there is something there. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks for the recommendation.
I have a couple more. Will residents be able to get their vehicles in and out of their houses at all times or? Yeah, okay.
Yes, and Annie, I'm gonna help, correct me if I'm wrong here. They will have, they will be able to get their vehicles in and out at all times. And if that is not the case, they will be aware of that well in advance so that they can plan ahead for that.
Great. Have, have any communications gone out in Spanish?
Yes, all of our communications have been in English and Spanish.
Great. That's it for me. Thank you.
There any other questions?
Great questions.
Blair, I have a couple. One is you mentioned that if people had questions that you wanted to be the point contact person. Is that via the email that's listed in your presentation or is there some other way?
Either, either one of those can, will get to me in, in pretty quickly. So yes, you can use that email address or let me give you my personal one because it is a little bit confusing. My email address is Elizabeth with a Z dot McGary. M C G A R Y at excelenergy.com. You can call me Elizabeth or Blair. I will answer to either.
And then I, I'm not sure if this is necessarily a question for you or for Laurie, but I have been impressed at how the, the pavement patches that on Excel's work have been holding up. And I'm wondering if I could get some more information on your backfill procedures, which I'm sure are in compliance with our excavation permitting, but but I would like some specifics.
I think that I have someone on this call that can answer this. Annie, are you there in virtual?
Hi, my name is Annie Borchers. I am the Excel Energy Project Manager over Arken Construction Manager for this project. I can absolutely get you the standards that they restore to. I believe they do. And I, forgive me, I'm a jack of all trades, master of none, but I believe they do flow fill to 95% compaction and then a hot patch with asphalt over it for the street repairs. I can have my restoration supervisor draft up a quick explanation of their process for the permanent repairs and get that over to City.
Thank you. I'd, I'd really appreciate that detail.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions? Thank you both so very much.
Thank you guys for having us. Really appreciate it and glad to hear that the pavement patches are happily end on that high note.
One of the best parts of West Third right now.
Thank you again for having us.
All right, now we have a presentation regarding the Level Race Series TUPs. I know Tamara has presented to us before about the changes that are going to be in place. And so this will be our opportunity to really consider the, the TUPs themselves and ask questions because the goal then is to have these races show up on our consent agenda so we can approve them and they'll swoop if there is no discontent. So take it away, Tamara.
I'm here and I think, I don't have a ton to say. I mean, I put the PowerPoint back in there if you want to look at it again, but I think we just opened up to questions, Mayor, if that suits you and council members, if that suits you. Let's start with the marathon. The big change here was, I don't know if, is Andrew or who would be putting the PowerPoint up? And I don't have to have it, but if you want to see it and it's back in your packet, I believe I did send it out last week. So the big change here, 6:30 to 9:30, so 6:30 being the, the change on the marathon from 7:00 AM and then the 9:30 start on that heavy half. The big reason here is to give us a little more safety buffer on Mosquito Pass and ensure that we just have as much space to get those people through there safely and have a better experience overall safety and athlete-wise and everybody else. The other piece is we did update some times on there and got those operating plans back to you guys. So they're attached appropriately with a couple of sign changes in terms of working with, with Tony with the city streets to make sure that we had the right times on there to sign everything. Everything is about the same otherwise on the marathon. We have added a few more porta pots in a couple of places along Sixth Street and then also moving up. I added a couple up higher. So just before the, we had one there, but I think added another along the bridge at the mineral belt and then up at the corner there of 2A and County Road 1. So positive things I think there, but any questions on the marathon in particular that I could address for everybody?
Marathon questions? We have. Okay. I think we're good.
Sweet. Camps would be next for you guys, I guess. Nothing major there. I don't know that we have anything significant to update on those that's different than it has been. I did mention to you that knowing that we might have some constraints on resources that we have kind of aligned with the sheriff's office to make sure we had support for mountain bike camp on the Saturday morning at the stoplight. We have the riders leave from the retail store and head down Sixth Street and, you know, go out, go Harrison to Sixth Street as they normally would on the actual turn. So we have somebody there at the stoplight till we get everybody out. It'll be about 100 people. Don't expect anything major there, but that is maybe the only call out that I have for those. We'll continue to do everything else. Any questions on the camps that stand out for anybody in particular? Okay. Seeing those. That brings us to the stage races now, you guys, mountain bike, 100 mountain bike and 100 run. So on both of them, the big changes that you'll see that we are going for that I think are instrumental in city limits are a couple of things. One is on, did talk with Laurie about and, and Officer Ortega, I'm not sure, are we, are we referring to him as interim chief? I'm not sure we're referring to him as, but and then city streets as well. You know, in terms of how we handle the morning from 5:00 AM to 7:00 AM and ensure that we want to model it the same way we have the last two years. So we'll start on Harrison, everything stays the same. We're working out the details together on, you know, is, does city streets feel like they have the manpower to handle a dump truck on either end of Harrison there? We, we came to the conclusion two years ago with some of the different levels of security. You know, we bring in a bomb squad team who's a part of our team for the mountain bike and is there through the expo and through the actual race day morning to ensure safety for everybody. You know, as we know, big groups of people congregating in small known areas can become a a hotspot for us to pay attention to. So we've taken as many precautions there as we can. And one of those that we discussed two years ago was really containing that Harrison street until we get everybody out of there and keeping all of the humans in that area contained but safe. And so one of those options was to have a dump truck on either end with a, with a red and blues car of some sort on the other side that was movable. We'll continue to work through that together to determine if the dump truck, dump truck is possible. And if it does not become possible, we'll look at what the best next step is if we want cade there or what we want that feels good to everybody. The, the beauty of the dump truck is it can move and it can move quickly, which is helpful. So working with them on that, no big change there. I think the things that are important to us is around communication. It's around, we're gonna move the toilets from, we gotta talk about toilets a lot, you guys. We're gonna move the toilets from the expo lot on Friday night down to Harrison and we're gonna line Harrison and Sixth Street with toilets. We're gonna try to really curb this behavior of going to the bathroom in places that we don't want people to go to the bathroom. So that's number one, and then we'll pull them out of there after everybody's out. So in the morning, we see that as the highest anxiety level where people are doing stupid things where their prefrontal cortex is apparently not working well and not helping to make, you know, good, good impulse decisions there. So we're gonna try to help them with that, but we're also gonna have law enforcement. Heath and I've talked a little bit about, you know, if we need to, we're gonna start to write citations and we're gonna, we're gonna pull biz, we're gonna start to pull, you know, that what we need to, to help people understand, we prefer not to go down that path. Obviously, we're here to help everybody get their buckle, secure a dream, win a dream, do the things that they've trained hard to do. But at the same time, our community is critical and taking care of our community is critical. So that's something that we're gonna be focused on. The other piece, I just ordered about 110 new signs that we're going to stage along Sixth Street, private property, no parking signs for our homeowners in that area to, to help protect their, their, their space and their life as well in that, in that realm. If they don't want it there, we won't put it there, but to give them the opportunity. We've been working pretty strongly around communication with Sarah Edwards. Congratulations, Sarah. But at the same time, we've been working on that piece of communication with her and with Betty Benson to make sure that we're hitting all the marks here. Starting shortly in the next couple of weeks, we'll start getting everything out to folks so that they're very aware of everything that's happening. So those are some of the big pieces that we're doing. As I mentioned, this is not necessarily city impacted, but we are limiting driving to Twin Lakes for the mountain bike and we are eliminating it for the run. So for Twin Lakes Dam, they will have, will have a very limited red, silver, gold. And the reason for this is not because we're elitist and as if anybody knows me well enough knows that that's probably the last place I'm gonna put my emphasis, but because we are trying to make sure that the faster humans can get nutrition out to their athletes, that their crews can get out there. So we'll have a very limited amount of parking. This is also a phased approach. You know, let's learn what we can this year from shifting to a shuttles only out to Twin Lakes and, and the bike is so fast that we want to make sure to do this in a way that works for everybody. So we'll have a very limited amount of parking we're working with. We've worked with Heath. I have my staff and the shuttle staff. We've all started working on maps and all that kind of pieces of how we park everybody at Outward Bound, how we get them out there safely. We'll have law enforcement out there to support us and help move traffic along and keep it flowing. So we will see that change. I expect where that's gonna impact the city is 6:30 to 8:30 while we're getting people out of here and moving. And frankly, I think we won't see as much of it string town. We'll probably see a little more of it maybe, but probably Saturdays in that area. And we're going to be working with all of those residents in that area and have communications prepared to go out and also door to door and just talk with folks and let them know what we're doing and how we're making changes. And that course, reminder, that course is now being altered. I had Sterling out to work with Brock out at Outward Bound. We'll move the mountain bike off of the pavement at 300 and County Road 11. It'll go through the outward bound property where the run goes through there. And hopefully what that's going to do is also decrease congestion on that corner and safety around that pavement area of the corner and also those residents on County Road 11 right there. So once we get everybody to outward bound, we should see it settle down and we should see the traffic settle down and have a lot less congestion. So big changes there. Questions on the mountain bike? Let's start there.
Any questions specifically on that mountain bikers? No? Okay.
Tamara, I've, I've got one quick question and maybe not specific just to mountain bike. But Tamara, across the race series generally, are you looking for any support from the city other than the potential use of the dump trucks from the street department?
Tried to minimize that this year, knowing that we were just tight on resources. So city roads, city roads and bridges, Tony will be an asset in terms of getting signage up, making sure that we have everything appropriately signed. But beyond that, and then in mountain bike day, you know, where that comes in is the dump trucks. It's also, we have put up the cade on what would be fifth and fourth, so that people are not trying to enter Harrison right there, just fifth, you know. So a couple of little pieces, so that would be the biggest piece. But outside of that, with the run, with the camps and with the marathon, no. You know, and the mountain bike would be the biggest piece, but we're trying to reduce that this year.
All right, thank you. That was my question.
Are there any other questions regarding the mountain bike or general?
I have a general question. When Lumines is the first weekend of August?
Correct.
Go and then get to move on, Mayor. And council members. Yeah, and 100 run, really, I don't think I need to say a lot more here to hold your time. Same thing. However, on this event, everything is contained to west on Sixth of Harrison. So we're not trying to be on Harrison. So that helps minimize some of that in the morning. It is 4:00 AM. We don't, I mean, we're gonna do the same thing with the toilets. So that'll be the big thing there and the same thing with the signage just to help support our community and residents in that area. And besides that, I don't foresee anything major around the city pieces. Again, no driving to Twin Lakes Village at all this year. And, and I'm gonna say this and reiterate it numerous times, people are going to push the limits. They're gonna do things, but we are attempting. We've got a pretty complex plan in place with wristband collar coded to each aid station, to each place where they're allowed to be and where they're not allowed to be. So they have to have the right parking pass, the right wristbands if they're able to park there. There will be no crewing at May Queen in the morning. There will only be crewing in the afternoon. So they'll have a parking pass, for example, to May Queen in the afternoon and four wristbands out there. But we're limiting the number of crews, we're limiting the parking. We're not having driving to Twin Lakes. And hopefully, we're starting to move in a direction of figuring out how we can minimize some of the congestion and some of the overall impact, but also continue as Twin Lakes has asked for to not impact the revenue that comes in for them economically by having folks out there. So trying to balance both of those, but keep it safe. We definitely know that 82, as I've watched it for the last two years, is not safe. And so wanting to really rectify that. I don't think I have a lot more to say about May Queen. We do have a plan in place at the county. This is county. It will be well communicated and it will be clockwise traffic, one direction only in the evening from 5 o'clock until the next morning on Sunday when we get everybody through there. And that will be managed by law enforcement. We will have law enforcement out in Twin Lakes as well to help support building really positive behavior around these changes. And to be at those critical points to help keeping, to help keep traffic moving. So we'll have law enforcement, Colorado State Patrol will be in both the mountain bike and the run. They'll be out at 300 County State Highway 300 and the entrance to Outward Bound, as we see that could be a critical area. And we'll have support at the entrance where people are parking to keep things moving. So I think those are the highlights, questions on the run.
Questions over there?
I have a couple. Or just in general, thanks, Tamara. Can you share more about the shotgun blast? What's that process?
What's that process?
Yeah.
I'm not sure if I understand the question.
Oh, it says you start the race with a shotgun blast?
That's been true for 40 years.
Right.
It's a blank. And that's what you're asking. I'm sorry, council member. I'm trying to understand what the, it's a blank. It's a blank.
Who fires the gun? Who checks the blanks? A blank? What is, what is?
We have three people that will check that it's a blank. It's either myself or Ken who fires it. And I do have under safety if that helps you.
I don't know. It depends on what you do.
Well, maybe we should get out there and compare, compare, compare.
At what, what time in the morning does that happen?
That happens at 4:00 AM.
Okay. It, it does seem like a bit of a startling experience for the nearby residents at 4:00 AM to get you know, firearm shot. Have we heard any concerns from residents about that?
I have heard more personally from, from cheering supporters. I don't actually remember.
So there's so much human noise that the firearm rise isn't.
That's just my own, my own experience.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions?
Maybe it's not a problem if you haven't heard about it.
Any other question?
Oh, can we, about the private parking signs, I love that idea. Can we do that though? Haven't we? Arrived at legal complexity around. Declaring on street parking private?
I'm gonna just do no parking. I mean, I think you guys tell me, I don't have to do it, but what I have is two different signs. One of them says private property, which will go on their property line to help them protect just people peeing in their yard. That's what we're after on that one. No parking is an option for us to put in numerous places. If you don't want them on the streets, there's plenty of other places for, for example, the US Forest Service, the bank, Lisa, Dr. Lisa's office. Like people are parking along the course in places where they shouldn't. So I'd love to let our property owners use them for that timeframe to ensure that their parking ability is protected, but. You guys tell me what the scoop is there.
Y- yeah, I think that there there are two different things. We're not gonna be putting up signs that say private parking. I think there's private property and no parking.
Right.
Uh, but because I think, uh, Councilmember Tharp, you're you're right. We we did um have an issue where we were blaming things, private parking, and we were told that we weren't allowed to do that.
But is no parking okay? Lori?
Yep. Yep.
And my thought right now, I'd love your input, everybody, my thought right now is that. You know, I'm gonna hold a town hall, we're gonna get that going on here at the end of the month and. But I would rather just say, hey, we're happy to come out and do this versus they have to come get it, they have to put it up. And if people don't want it, they don't have to have it, you know. We we can go either way, but my feeling was I wanna help eliminate some of the impact that has been happening and help help our community feel like we hear them. We hear that this has been an issue. So. Absolutely correct, it's no parking and private property, two different signs.
Thanks.
Any other questions? For the race series in general? Tamara, I really appreciate this. This is uh obviously another whole level of planning has gone into these changes and. Um, you know, in the years that I've been on council, it it's very clear that this whole process. Has been really responsive to concerns that have been voiced and I, I appreciate your. I appreciate your your open ear and your willingness to make modifications.
I do have one question.
We have a question.
Um, specifically, uh, speaking about the ten K, that's right after the bike race. Um, you mentioned on the application somewhere if approved, uh, by by us or by. Someone else, um.
Cause it's also can, they have to do counting too?
Yeah, I guess I'm just asking because that one very specifically in parentheses, but if permitted, sorry. Um, around the expo location. Um, um. What would need to be permitted by them?
I don't know, I'm sorry. Um, can you, where is it, where is it?
Sure, it's um.
I'm on an iPad too, I apologize, I got stuck and couldn't drive back to the web, but.
It's page two of eight on the actual application itself or page forty one on the packet. Um, it reads the expo, if permitted, will be located on the um gravel uh lots on Sixth and Poplar. On the lifetime property.
I think honestly, councilman, it's uh. All of them should say that, right? Like the expo, the race, if permitted, that's all it is, it's a nuance, it's not a. A suggestion towards something specific. But you're you're approving that we are allowed to have this, we, the road closed in that area. And that the overall that the T U P is being permitted and it's all it was referencing, it was.
I see.
I think it was a respect, it was a respecting that didn't follow in every sentence or every one of the lines.
Other comments or questions? On the race series?
Uh, I would just uh like to point out, so I would like to thank Ms. Jenly for coming again to present. The idea behind this is we wanted to make this a seamless process and it seemed to work better to have the presentation. And then have the items on the following agenda, so they will be on the following agenda for approval. And we do want that on consent, which means that there wouldn't be any discussion on it. You would just approve all the items without any discussion. So I only raise that right now so that we can um have that process happen and have the next meeting be. Efficient, so I, that is sort of a. Please speak up now, we'd rather not pull these from the consent agenda uh next meeting and we'd like to get them approved and. Uh. Get going on the rest of the summer permits.
No, I think I'll wait to pull it from the consent that didn't actually.
Wait, what's that?
Nothing.
Being a punk. Um. All right. Thank you very much.
Have a great night, thank you, everybody. Enjoy the snow.
Thanks, Tamara. All right, let's move on to a presentation um from the Office of Emergency Management with Claire Skeen.
I hope I shared my screen and clip and let her focus on everything else she's doing over there. Something was really fun, I think. So thank you all for having me tonight, my name is Claire Skeen, I'm the Director of Emergency Management for Lake County. Um, I've been in front of you all a few times before to talk about E nine one one authority, the emergency operations plan, winter weather preparedness. And what tonight stems from is a conversation I have with Councilmember Edwards. I hope he's enjoying race a few months ago. Just talking about how can we improve better collaboration and coordination between city and county. Specifically looking at county offices that don't have a sister department in the city like emergency management. Um, so this is a presentation I did earlier this year. Um, it was from my snack and chat uh series, it was a forty five minute long presentation, I condensed it into ten, so please bear with me. Uh, your packet does have, the printout has the whole presentation, so I'll skip over some slides tonight. Uh, but I hope that over time you can see the rest of those slides, I think they're interesting. Uh, but with that being said, oh, I guess. Do it this way then. Um, so who is Lake County O E M? Um, first there's me, I'm the Director, I've been in this role since November twenty twenty two. Um, I'm really happy to say that I just onboarded my Deputy Director last week, Sam Rutenberg, I'm really excited to have her onboard. Um, I stole her over from Department of Human Services. She also has a background as a dispatcher and an animal trainer, so she has a really cool story about being fed by a macaw if you ever get to talk with her. Um, and then many of you also know the Lake County resident, Mabel Bogart, um, full-time public works admin, part-time emergency services coordinator. Um, so that is our office and I'm glad to say we're fully staffed now. Um, this is the FEMA definition of emergency management, I read it on about five different occasions. Um, I get to the word managerial and I lose all interest. Um, but what this really means, what the government says I do. Is I really coordinate um all these activities across our five mission areas. Um, to facilitate quality consequence management. And I'm gonna say that phrase a lot tonight, consequence management. And that's the phrase I want you guys to take away, so a special hint for the test later. Um, but in turn, um, consequence management, every incident has a consequence. So there's a fire, an active shooter, a flood, there's something that happens because of that and that's where my office steps in. So whether that's evacuation shelters, um, damage assessments, public information, that's what I step in with. In addition to that, we also do training and exercise, so fire trains every day. Um, they come up to my office once a month, they throw a ladder against the building, they pull some hose, scares me every time. Um, and then maybe later that night, they go, the EMS crew comes over and they do a medical training. My trainings involve everyone. Um, I bring CSP in, I bring D F P, DFPC, Division of Fire and Emergency Control in. Policy group, elected officials, all of our emergency support function leads, like public health and human services. Um, so I do those larger trainings for those complex incidents. Um, but all of the work that I do feeds into the National Preparedness School. Um, after nine eleven, uh, the President sat down and he wrote this goal, a secure and resilient nation. So all the work that I do at the local level, the work that my colleagues do at the. Their local levels, their municipal levels, the state, all the way up to FEMA, we're all trying to move towards this goal of secure and resilient nation. Um, so we do that with those five missionaries I mentioned. I give you that, I call it terrorism and all hazard bread and butter. Um, terrorism is pretty straightforward, um, we wanna safeguard the homeland. That's a quote from FEMA, use it if you wanna feel like you're in a Liam Hees in movie. Um, other than that, we have what I call all hazard bread and butter. Eighty percent of the work that I do falls into one of these three categories, mitigation, response and recovery. So any task that I do a day falls into one of these buckets. Um, and I do work in the terrorism areas, um, but really my core thing is that is that mitigation, response, recovery. This is a quote from a previous Colorado Emergency Manager. And I like to put it up there because if you look at the history of emergency management, we really just evolved as a profession right after nine eleven. Um, you can trace us back to the civil defense era, which is why there's like a triangle in a lot of emergency management logos. But this is a new and evolving profession. Um, and I've always firmly believed that in a local emergency management office reflects the needs of the community. So yes, we have best practices from FEMA, but the work that I do, my program, looks different than my colleagues in Boulder and Teller and Jeffco. And that's okay because they're serving their community. There are things that cross my desk that would never cross Boulder's desk. And that's fine, I don't wanna be him, it's why I work in Lake County. Um, so rural emergency or emergency management, it's flexible, it's fun, it's different, but it's this new evolving field and that's really exciting to me. Um, so emergency management in Lake County, if these are the incidents we have, how do we respond to them? How do we take care of our people? Um, and the question that I always get is, so what do you do? Um, well, I can definitely tell you what I don't do. I don't fight fire and I don't tell fire how to fight fire. Chief Bailey and his crew are really, really good at that, so I'm not gonna get into that. But what I do do is I manage evacuation centers and shelters to help those that were evacuated. Um, I set up facilities for incident command and take care of our firefighters and any mutual aid resources coming in. We have a mobile kitchen unit, um, so we can set that up and feed a lot of firefighters that way. Um, I'm not an E M T anymore, I don't provide medical care, but I do organize and order resources to help support an incident. Um, as much as I wish I performed avalanche mitigation, um, I I don't. But I do coordinate with C dot, the Colorado Avalanche Information Center, public works on any type of road closures or press releases. I don't cut down trees on property that's not my own. Uh, but I do work with mitigation partners like Team Rubicon and look for grant opportunities to bring those mitigation resources to let them in Lake County. Um, and finally, I don't have any authority, that's a really big misconception, I don't decide anything. Um, I don't declare disasters, I don't order evacuations, but what I do do is I make. Um, recommendations to policymakers, to city council, to the Board of County Commissioners, to the sheriff. Um, using subject matter expertise either from myself or my stakeholders. Um, and whether you guys follow that recommendation, it's up to you guys. But to sum it all up, while our first responders are handling all of this. Um, the Emergency Operations Center and O E M is in the background doing all of this. Um, we're providing public information, telling people what's going on and where can they get help. We're managing evacuation centers, um, we're doing those larger training and exercises. Um, that top right-hand corner picture, many of you guys know that man, that's Greg Teeter of Parkville Water. Um, in the tiny background is Kayla Marcello, but she's the Finance Director. I've always imagined this scenario as Greg saying like, hey, our water infrastructure is threatened by this fire, we need to be aware of this and plan for this. Um, Kayla's in the background telling us how much the incident cost, how much staff do we have on scene, how much overtime are we paying, what is the cost of the incident? But that bottom picture is the Emergency Operations Center, um, that is that small little room where all the magic happens. But what is an Emergency Operations Center? Well, it's a place with a lot of chairs and there's always a pot of coffee on, I promise. Um, but it's also a place where leaders come to coordinate information and resources. I've always said it's a place where you'd raise your hand and say, I need, and for somebody else to say, I have. Um, so a good example is COVID, public health um raises their hand and say, hey, we have vaccines in Denver. They need to be picked up, transported to Lake County, and here's the type of um truck that we need to get them there. Public Works raises their hand and say, I have a truck that can do that. So that's where we work, um, but it's bringing together that subject matter expertise. Um, our our physical one is here, uh, at the end of Penn Street. Um, it also is the Lake County Search and Rescue Building, they're my very loved roommates. Um, but it cannot simply be virtual in this post-COVID world or wherever the incident demands it to be. But it's not the Incident Command Post. Um, the Incident Command Post is focusing on those tactical objectives of how to stabilize an incident. And I'm working on the consequence management. So how is our E O C structured? Um, if you were on council last year, you probably remember me coming to talk about the Emergency Operations Plan update. And our org chart is in your packet on your table. Uh, but we have sixteen emergency support functions, which is a coordinating structure separated out by expertise. So E S F, Emergency Support Function eight is public health, that's led by Lake County Public Health Agency. Um, E S F three is led by Lake County Public Works. So all those people are coming together to do that, I lead and I have. Um, the E O C works in coordination with the policy group, um, and also with the Incident Command Post. But my present pretty well tonight is a, it's a new thing I've been working on. It's called the Level Lake County Elected Official and Executive Staff Guide to Emergencies and Disasters. Nice little lengthy name. Uh, but I've been working on it with Councilman Edwards, um, Lori's reviewed it, a few other of you have seen it. Um, this is a new tool that I'm providing to new elected officials and staff. To help them be more familiar with emergency management, what their role is as an elected official. Um, so it's in your packet tonight, I can also shoot you an email if anyone needs it. Um, but I really hope, it's still open for feedback, um, I'm just kinda trying to roll it out throughout the twenty twenty four election cycle, so you guys are my guinea pigs, thank you. Uh, but please read it, let me know what you think. Is it helpful for you, does it address what you wanna know? Um. And how can I make it better? Um, I really hope this guide acts as a springboard for new elected officials where I can sit down with them, like we did a little while ago. Tell them what I'm working on, how they can get involved, um, and start that conversation. So that's all I have, I hope I came in right under ten minutes, I apologize. I'm working on speaking slower, but I don't think tonight was the night. Um, I would love to hear from all of you, like, how can we better support you at Lake County Emergency Management? What do you wanna see from us, what are your concerns as we head into wildfire season? And then my contact information is on that presentation as well.
I really appreciate your work on that, on that uh, that new resource. I know when you and I talked and I was like, oh, I got all these FEMA, you know, FEMA guides for elected officials and it's. Ninety-five percent not really applicable to our little, us in a small little town, so, and thank you for your work on that. Questions, comments?
Yeah, I I got. Um, I actually do have that outfit and if you go to, if you go to an emergency management conference, you will see that. I don't even know if it's ironic at this point, I think it's just.
It's just like a cheap way to get a pullout.
Yeah. Usually a pen in the pocket on the side too is common.
Councilmember Thomas, I think you were making a comment.
Yeah, thank you, um, I think this guide is great. Uh, I read through it earlier today, I think it's very useful. I still have a question maybe about how the. Public Information Officer coordinates with city council and the mayor because I think in um. You know, maybe our biggest role in any kind of emergency will be sharing information as people contact elected officials. And we need to get that information from somewhere, which should be the Public Information Officer who has. The single message that we should all be sharing. And I'm not sure exactly how that happens, it looks like the P I O accepts information from a bunch of different agencies. But then is there a mechanism for that Public Information Officer then to share the messaging back out to people that might need it to share with others?
Yeah, absolutely, and that brings up a great point, um, it's why I'm so sad that you've been Sarah Edwards at the county. Um, excited for her new role, um, but really, I've really enjoyed working with her, um, to really develop the processes that you just described. Um, you as an elected official will never be without information. Um, and we will make sure that you know how to best reassure the community. Um, what you can tell them, what maybe is a little bit more sensitive at the time depending on the incident. Um, but we will help prepare you for that, so one thing that I'm very passionate about are community briefings. Um, usually led by an elected official, they elected you, they trust you, you are the face of the department. Um, but we're not gonna just throw you out in front of a camera, um, the Public Information Officer, myself, um, we work together to develop that message. Feed it to you, let you ask questions, um, have voice any concerns and like make you feel prepared and sharing that information.
All right, so that's still sort of a work in progress, sounds like, or not, there's a process in place already?
All right. So that's still sort of a work in progress, it sounds like, or not? There's a process in place already?
Um, I mean, it's a little bit incident-specific in what message is being delivered where, but it is kind of a work in process, especially as we work through Sarah's transition.
Okay. And then I see on the important phone numbers and contacts, a lot of great agencies in the city and the county. Uh, but I, I don't see our neighboring counties included here, which might be good to include for communication of any potential disaster, Chaffey County, Park County.
Are you talking about their emergency management offices or their elected officials?
Uh, well, either really, uh, it, I just don't see any phone numbers or contacts from our neighboring counties in the, in the table.
Okay. Yeah, I can add those in for sure.
Okay. But otherwise, I mean, I think it's great, very, very useful. I like the, um, kind of condensed version. And I saw in here somewhere, there are also a couple of, I think FEMA, online FEMA classes that are recommended for elected officials. Do you, do you have any sense on how long those are?
Uh, so those are self-paced courses online, um, through FEMA. It's really what you make of them. I know people that buzzed the room in an hour. I know people that buzzed the room in like six hours. Uh, but they're all self-paced, uh, so you can kind of take them at your own rate pace, do a chapter, come back the next day. Um, as we kind of move through this election season, I will be holding kind of a local for elected officials class. Uh, we did one last year that was more state-run. Um, and I'm working currently with the Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, DHSEM. Um, to kind of do more combining the FEMA standard with the local knowledge. Um, so that course will be rolling out in twenty twenty-five. Forgot what year it was.
That'd be good. I might wait for that one rather than try to slog through a FEMA online course.
Yeah, they're, they're great tools. They're good resources, um, but they are dry. I will.
All right. Thank you. That's all I had. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for the feedback.
Other comments? Okay, thank you so very much.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for having me.
Really appreciate the engagement. Yeah, if you would, that'd be great, if it's not. So I've got the next two presentations slash discussions. The first one is on city strategic planning, which is something that, um, coming into office and hearing about how very many, many, many things are going on in the city. Um, in addition to just the day-to-day operations. I thought that it would be useful to come at this somewhat strategically. And instead of just trying to tackle everything everywhere all at once and making extremely slow progress. To, in the end, identify specific priorities, specific goals, and start knocking them off a list. So we don't really toss out any goals or objectives, but we, we just prioritize them and set stuff on the back burner. So. Is everybody still online? Okay, cool. So, um, so earlier this year, I spoke with, um, or took bids from four different uh, groups or individuals who provide strategic planning and went over their, um, proposals with the city administrator and then also with, um, council member Thomas. And in the end selected, um, a gentleman, John Trilch, who is the strategic planner for the city of Fountain. Um, he comes from a military background of strategic, strategic planning. Uh, and the thing that I particularly liked about his approach is not only did it include the, the basics that you would see from other groups, which is, you know, set the priorities and then set goals and objectives. But his also included timelines and accountability. And for us, being the fiduciary agents for the rest of the city, I thought it was really important for us to be able to hold up different goals and say, here's the timeline, here's who's responsible for which part, and then like six months later, here's what we've achieved, and if we're behind on a timeline, why is that? What can we do to, to shift our progress? Um, so that was for me a main reason, uh, that, that, um, I selected him. Um, so he and I have been talking over, uh, this. And what he proposed doing, first of all, is kind of taking that twenty thousand-foot view and reviewing our city mission, vision, and values. We actually have that, that's up there on the screen. City Council with the, uh, under the expert facilitation of Sarah Day, put this together in two thousand and eighteen, and I think it's pretty good. Um, but he identified and he really focused in on the vision and said, yes, but I have questions. You know, for example, what would people say if you asked them, well, what is the authentic Leadville identity? Like, what does that mean to you? And so because our, our schedules are a little bit conflicted and we sort of got, you know, like we couldn't start in January. What we decided to do was put together a, a survey that we can blast out to the public. And, oh, you guys, of course, and get some feedback on what are, what, what do these specific things within the vision statement mean? And when we gather that information, which we'll do, uh, I should have the survey out, uh, next week. Um, when we gather that information, uh, we will then work to set priorities based on our city vision. Um, so Mr. Trilch is going to come out June eighteenth. That's our regular city council meeting, just to introduce himself and kind of go over his process with this. Um. Okay, and so then, um, I, what we would like to do is have a town hall that would involve council and any interested public. I'm going to propose Tuesday, August thirteenth, because it's an off week for us. It's in between like when we might hold a work session and he's available at that time. Um, and so just looking ahead, there's like nothing, of course, on our calendar right now for that. But what I would like to do is hear back from you guys. If that date works. Um, I'd like to nail it in so that we can start advertising that too after the survey. Um, after that time, that meeting will be to set priorities. And then he will meet individually with council members, with department heads, to set goals and objectives leading to those goals. Um, and then really nicely timed right around our budget session is when he's gonna just coagulate all of that and come out with a strategic plan and what comes first for each department and how they're going to get there, um, and what comes second. I think that will both help inform our budgeting. I think it will help clarify to staff and, and department heads what they are working on. And I, I think it will help restrain council a little bit because we have such great ideas, right? We don't want to keep overwhelming people. We, like, you know what? But I can put you on the list. I'll put your ideas on the list, but I think it will help us, the city move forward in a more predictable and measurable way. Um, so that's it on strategic planning. Any questions?
Thank you for, um, putting together that process and, um, getting the facilitator and stuff. Um, how does this intersect with, um, the comprehensive planning process? How do they differ and?
So the, uh, they differ in that it's really it's more specific to the, the city functions rather than, you know, like, how are we going to think about the zoning here or there? Or how are we going, you know, like, as a I mean, personally, I think, because we have to do our comprehensive plan next year. I think it will lend into some portions of it. Um, if we have our own kind of ducks in a row. But you know, like, for instance, we talk about each year, you know, like, oh, we want to pave, want to pave roads. Want to pave this many roads. You know, Tony's put together some high priority roads and that map up there. You know, but, but really, what are we going to do this year? With the resources we have? And what are we going to do next year? With the resources we have? And what else do we need to do to make sure that those specific things happen? As an example, that wouldn't necessarily be in the comprehensive plan.
And, and I think that the, one of the main differences between a comprehensive plan and a strategic plan is a comprehensive plan is, is generally like your constitution for land use planning. It's your overarching guidance where a strategic plan looks at policy. What, what, you know, do we want to pursue um, a dark skies ordinance? Do we, do we want to do, you know, a climate action plan? What types of policies and what types of direction does the city council want to take, um, policy-wise? And some of that is comprehensive, may end up as part of the comprehensive plan. But comprehensive, um, plan is more land use-based.
Other comments or questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Do I understand that the survey is only going to address the vision statement and not this mission or the values?
It really is, because at, at least in terms of, you know, our vision is our aspiration.
Right.
You know, like, how, how do we vision ourselves? Where do we want to see ourselves? And that feeds the priorities. But. Yeah. Can always pick these up. I mean, like I said, I participated in those, so I'm a little biased, but. All right, other comments? Great. Yep. Please, Steve.
Okay, so, um, I'm concerned about two things. It also has to do with the emergency management thing and the city strategic plan is um, housing for indigenous people or housing for people that are living in the woods right now. If they're living in the woods, the fire danger increases. Um, also, they have a negative contribution to the, um, by their accumulation of trash and things like that. Um, broken bottles and whatever. So I, we don't have the things that are occurring and working right now on unhoused people being prosecuted for, um, being unhoused. We need to have some kind of a shelter for these people to go to before we can actually do something about not, not living in the shelter. So I, we have people that are camping out in the public bathrooms here. Um, and that's going to, and they could do it chronically, and that's going to run into a problem in the summer, when the summer increase, use increases. So I was hoping we could have some kind of a housing thing for people that are without housing.
So a really important place for you to bring those ideas and those concerns is going to be the town hall in August. And that's, that's really where we're going to nail out, like, what are our priorities? Um, so I really encourage, I know, I, I will just plan on seeing you there. Um, so we'll, we'll decide on a final date, but maybe kind of put a, a light thumbtack in August thirteenth on that Tuesday. Normal city council time.
Is that when we as electeds would also have an opportunity to share? I mean.
Oh, yeah. This is specifically, that particular meeting is for council and public. Okay.
Because I've been preaching that for months.
Yes. Okay. Other comments? Okay, so the next, um, discussion that I would like to have, I think, will be a brief one. I know that earlier this year, we decided to try to simplify and, um, and, and provide some equity to our contingency fund that where we give funding to different programs or different requests around the community that we would bulk it up into two times during the year. Um, one of the things that inevitably will slip, has slipped through is the city's, um, decision regarding funding the Lake County High School Musical. This is something that the city has traditionally done every year, right around this time of year, because the musical's at the end of this month. It's, um, it's Shrek, the musical. Look forward to that. So last year, at the end of the year, Scott Carroll, the principal, started this discussion with Greg about, hey, this is what we're going to do next year. Do you want to do this? And then in that transition between, um, mayor lobby's time and me coming on, that sort of fell through the cracks. And so, um, Scott Carroll reached out to me, uh, in the end of April and said, hey, I haven't heard anything, you know, are, are we going to do it again this year? Um, and I was like, oh, my gosh. So what I would like to do, because it is kind of time-sensitive, is see if you guys would support doing the same one thousand dollar donation to the Lake County High School Musical that we have done annually in the past. Um. And, uh, if so, then what we would do is have a resolution on our next meeting. And then typically what happens then is that students come in and accept the pretend check.
Is it gigantic?
It no. I think we're over the days of big checks.
Um, is one thousand enough? Is that what we've traditionally done?
That is what we have traditionally done. That is what we have traditionally asked for. Much of this goes toward like the rights to particular scripts and, you know, et cetera.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay.
I agree.
The kids put on a fantastic show. I think we should support it.
They, they put on a really high-quality production every year without fail. Okay. Uh, Councilmember Thomas, do you have any concerns or?
I don't. I think we should support it. I'll, I'll be more comfortable when we have a consistent approach on how to manage all of our requests, but we've done it in the past. I think we should carry on.
And so, and what I talked to, um, Scott Carroll about was next year, we can make that decision like in our early year donation decisions, um, and then, you know, again, sort of come up with the check in, in May when they need it.
That'd be great.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, so Lori, if we can get that on our next meeting, that would be great. We could even possibly put it in the consent agenda. All right, that is, that is it for discussions and presentations. I just want to take a moment and say, look how on time we are. Holy cow. Let's move on. We have a presentation, um, regarding the lemonade stand. And I think Asher, Honey, and Owen King are in the audience to come and tell us what they intend to do. And if, it if you go up to the podium and just kind of project, then we'll be able to, the people online will be able to hear you on the owl.
One, two, three, go.
Uh, we'd like to start a lemonade stand in front of the courthouse. And, uh, make money. And, um, we'd like to start a freshly, no, continue a freshly squeezed lemonade stand in front of the courthouse.
Can you tell us a little bit about how you actually make your lemonade?
We, uh, cut the lemons in half, then we squeeze them for the squeezer thing. And then we, uh, uh, add the sugar and the water and, yeah.
What are the dates that you think you'll be in operation?
Oh, I didn't, it's no, 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 no. It's no memorial day, it's October first.
Wow.
Yeah, I think. I know it's in the paper.
Some of that wraps over school. How will that?
Uh, on the weekends.
On the weekends, got it. Okay. Anyone have any questions regarding, we've seen the lemonade stand here in the past. It's always just been different proprietors.
What's proprietors?
Operators, owners and operators.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you two are the new proprietors, is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah.
And this is a continuation of a three-year permit? Is that also correct?
Yeah.
Yes, the, the Leadville Lemonade Temporary Use Permit, uh, was approved. Um, and twenty twenty-two or through twenty twenty-two, then there was an extension for three years. So it goes through September of this year. And then, so I believe with the new proprietors, we have to just have a new permitee on temporary use permit. Now with the new expiration date. So we can approve this for a few years from today.
How long have you been doing this?
This is my first year. Yeah.
Okay. Have you participated in past years? Okay. Have you participated in past years with other people?
Um, yeah.
Nice. So they've, they've given you some training on how to prepare a really good glass of lemonade. Any exciting changes for twenty twenty-four? Or not exciting changes?
You don't want change to do a thing, huh?
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? For Asher and Owen?
Oh, yeah. Um, can we also have permission to do the Trail One Hundred Expo?
I think that is something that you would need to work out with uh Tamara Jenly.
Oh, yeah.
My feeling is that if you are granted this permit um and that the expo is within the hours and days that you've identified that you'll be operating, and from the city's standpoint, it would be fine. Um, but because you would be overlapping with this very large event, I would seek her out. She's very nice.
Yeah. Who would we ask for the Trail One Hundred Run?
Same person.
Okay.
And if you need her contact information, I'm happy to provide it.
Okay.
Um, Chippen, is there formal motion language? I mean, I, I know they're, they're good through the end of this season. Um. I think what I would do is entertain a motion to um a, affirm our ongoing approval of the lemonade stand temporary use permit.
Yes, please to approve the lemonade stand. For expiration, just say um May seventh, twenty twenty-seven.
Okay.
And, and then name the permittees.
I, I got lost in all that. What did you do?
Uh, all right. Well, I will move to approve a temporary use permit for the lemonade stand with proprietors Owen King and Asher Horning through May.
May seventh.
May seven, twenty twenty-seven.
Oh, sorry.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lina?
Yes.
Councilmember Doug?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Bess?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
And Mayor Green?
Yes. Congratulations, gentlemen. Um, should I just get the race series contact information to you through your mothers?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll do. Oh, you have it? Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Kelly. That's excellent. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Get you out of here on time on school night. Makes me happy. All right, let's move on to resolution number twenty-five, series twenty twenty-four. This is a resolution appointing Historic Preservation Commission members. Chippen, do you wanna just give a little?
Yes, uh, so we have two vacancies on the Historic Preservation Commission right now. Um, what I refer to as the HPC. Uh, once, one vacancy is for a regular member, one vacancy is for an alternate member. Um, there are five regular members on the commission normally and two alternate members, an alternate member. It serves in the absence of a regular member, they can vote. Uh, so we have noticed that vacancy advertised in the paper. We have received three applicants, uh Stuart Frankone, who's currently an advisory commissioner uh for HPC, uh Stephen Marcato is here tonight, and also Steve Prestash is here tonight. Uh, the HPC um kind of voluntarily interviewed the candidates and has made a voluntary recommendation. This is not required by code. This is a decision by city council, but um made a volunteer recommendation uh to the city council uh to select uh Stuart Frankone as the regular member and Stephen Marcato as the alternate number. I should note that third applicant, Steve Prestash, has expressed interest um in if, if Stuart Frankone position, um if he's appointed to be a regular member, um then that would create a vacancy in the advisory member position. Um, Steve Prestash has expressed interest in filling that position. Uh, motion included in your packet on page eighty-five, and then so this will be a motion um for the proven resolution. And I have uh filled in the blanks with the HPC's recommendation. Uh, that was to suggest that we uh make a motion for whatever improvements you make, um that be in uh in one resolution, which is in draft form in your packet.
Comments or questions? Do we have? Neither Mr. Marcato nor Mr. Frankone. Oh, hello. Would you like to come up and introduce yourself or give us a little bit?
Thank you. Uh, my name is Steve Marcato. I'm actually a native here. I, I have lived here since I was two when we first moved here. So, I left, of course, after I graduated from high school here, went to college, spent my time in Denver, and came back to the community here in two thousand and five. Um, I've been heavily involved in past foundation, um in much every area of things I've been involved in. Um, I do have a little bit of architectural background. I did study it for a year. I've been always fascinated, and I also have an art background as well. So I've been fascinated with just the design and the old history of these old buildings and what view we have left in the community now. I'd like to be a part in him helping the people, uh, to continue to preserve them, be recognized, help people be identified, help them through the process and um get them a little bit more involved, get them more engaged, and then just really be a lot more involved in the community itself. Um, in helping with the uh the HPC in general. I'm involved with uh Alliance Club, the House Club, the Eagles Club, so I like being involved in the community. So this is just another uh um interest of mine that I think would be huge and will because of my uh artistic background and my architectural pursuit, you know, and just continuing to see our buildings, you know, remain intact and helping people get funding and and recognize that we can continue to keep them in, in their, uh, well, we're renewing them, I guess, if you will. Um, so any questions?
Like a perfect combination of arts and architecture. Any questions for Mr. Marcato? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Frankone's on here. I'll just, I'll just add that you know, the HPC has made recommendations for, for two members to join the commission. So staff would be supportive of, um, both of those members joining the commission. Uh, Mr. Frankone in his current position as a, as a advisory member has been uh, has been um great uh to work with, um, and has really just exercised some great thinking when it comes to uh design standards, compliance, and is really also working um to uh bring historic walking tours uh to Leadville um in, in his, in his role and um has spent a lot of volunteer hours um coordinating that. Um, so again, um, you have two recommendations from HPC, um, from members and staff would be supportive of both of them as opposed to me.
And I think Mr. Frankone included a, a pretty robust letter of interest in here, in our packet as well. So I understand that it is our appointment to appoint a regular member and an alternate member, but the advisory member is an appointment by HPC itself. Correct. Okay. Mr. Prestash, you are here and we're also um involved or interested. Would you like to give us a little?
Um, during the HPC meeting, I um um made the statement that I advocated that start um get that uh full position because of what he exhibited at the meeting. But um I think the documentation, a little miss needing, um, I would also like to get the alternate position. Uh, um, uh, this fellow here is quite qualified for that position. Um, but I've been living in Leadville since nineteen eighty. Um, I have quite a bit of experience with the statutes and um with the buildings in town. We're either working on them or underneath them or on top of them. Um, I guess I have a dissenting view on uh how the, our committees are put a, membership on, on uh, on various government groups. And this seems to be a stickler with uh both me and city council. I don't think Joey Edward should be on this committee uh on the HPC, cause he's a council member. I don't think Joey Edward should be on the ci- county PNC if he's still on that. Um, we have people that are on both the city and uh county PNC, at least Joey was uh for a while. Um, I think we have to start paying attention on who's on what kind of committee and what interests they represent. Um, if we have realtors making land use decisions, I think that's a bad thing. Thank you kindly.
Thank you. So it seems to me that this procedure through HPC is a little bit different than PNC. PNC doesn't really give us um, um approvals for the people vying for appointment the same way that HPC does. Um, is that?
It's, uh, it was completely voluntary in the HPC to do this. It's not even code. So per code, it's, it's uh, there's, there's no review that needs to go in front of HPC. Um, so they've got to say that the PNC might not do that in the future to a voluntary interview candidates, the candidates will.
Is there any discussion about the applicants? I mean, I agree. I think the the, then Mr. Frankone and Mr. Marcato are, are, are highly qualified for the nature of things that the HPC must consider. Other comments? All right then, um, since this is a mayoral appointment, I'm gonna make this motion and then we'll vote. I move to approve resolution number twenty-five, series of twenty twenty-four. A resolution of the city council of the city of Leadville, Colorado, appointing a regular member and an alternate member to the Historic Preservation Commission. I further move to appoint Mr. Stuart Frankone as regular member and Mr. Stephen Marcato as alternate member.
Good seconds.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Pretender?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
I'll abstain from voting on Stuart Frankone because of a direct conflict of interest, um, but I am in favor of Mr. Stephen Marcato being appointed.
Councilmember Lina?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Bess?
Yes.
And Mayor Green?
Yes. So does Councilmember Thomas's vote count as a half?
I would just put abstaining.
No. Thank you. Look forward to uh, look forward to seeing your work. Okay. We're moving on to resolution number twenty-six, series of twenty twenty-four. This is a resolution awarding the Tabor Opera House rehabilitation of the exterior envelope phase three construction contract, and we are graced with Sarah Day today to run us through this really very long
Yeah.
contract.
Thank you very much, City Council, and thank you, Lori Simonson, for putting all the packet pieces together. Um, we will need to coordinate on some of the components in the contract piece. I reviewed that earlier today, and there's some sections we'll want to invent in there. But we have the opportunity and privilege to be awarding through city council the third phase of the exterior rehabilitation project of the Tabor Opera House. We went through a robust IFB bid package process. We did have to have several addendums because we had some emergency repairs that showed up in March of this year, which also extended our timeline. Uh, and so we were graced with receiving two applications uh or bids, if you will, for this year and series of construction work. Uh, Spectrum, general contractors, who we are advocating for you to award the contract to tonight, as well as um our, our prior contractors A and M. Um, and so this was a difficult decision for our scoring committee and then ultimately our full board of directors of the Tabor Opera House. Uh, they met um on April twenty-sixth and reviewed the um items that are also in your packet that kind of looked at with the pros and the cons and the analysis of the two bids that were received. And ultimately, the savings of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars going with Spectrum and the opportunity to complete uh hopefully, the entire project for the most part in twenty twenty-four were the two main reasons why the board of directors of the Tabor Opera House decided to recommend awarding the contract to Spectrum. We do have Spectrum on the line, I believe, Steve Hansen, and I see his Hollywood square box up there, the zoom screen. Um, if there's any specific technical questions, but ultimately, as the owner of the property, it is uh required by you all as also the DOLA grant recipients of part of this project award to officially award the project. And that is why we go through this robust project with you as our partners on this project. And I'm open to answer any of the many questions that you as council may have this evening.
Have, um, I have a question. So have, have the prior portions of the envelope been, have, have they involved Spectrum before? Or is this a first time interaction with them?
This is the first time the Tabor Opera House will be working with Spectrum. However, Spectrum is a well-known and renowned architectural firm and contract, sorry, contractor firm in the state of Colorado. And um all of our architects that are on the project, Chris Haynes, who's our project architect and project manager on the team, have worked over thirty years in different projects with Spectrum throughout the state. Uh, Nan Anderson, who is our board member and architect and architectural firm, who highly recommends Spectrum, has partnered with them on many projects throughout the state. And also Natalie Board, a former board member and committee member of the building rehab committee and architect firm here in town, Formworks, uh, who's done a lot of historic structure assessments for Leadville, has also worked with Spectrum. And that is also part of the contemplation and review of the full board in rendering this decision to Spectrum.
Thank you. Other questions?
So it's going to be a really wild season. Uh, we are letting people know to um have the red carpet experience at the Tabor, because the red carpet will hopefully indicate where you need to enter the building this year. Because we are going to be kind of a um, you know, revolving door, if you will, of where our entry location will be. And we will learn that more in our uh work with Spectrum at our kickoff meeting on May twentieth. If you award the contract to them, that is what is tentatively settled right now, and start to put the pieces in place for all of the components to come together. So there will be lots of signage that I'm sure will also be coming to the city to be able to point people in the right direction and banners of the funders that are part of this project this year. But it will be the entire front facade, again, once again, having scaffolding on the whole building as they work on the storefront windows, the wood balcony and cornice, and then the upper chopped metal cornice of the building.
Thank you. I was going to ask how we were going to navigate working on the front and that full season.
The full season.
Um, but I love the red carpet idea. Other questions, concerns? Ponderings?
Great.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes, on that case, there are, is there no further discussion? I would entertain a, yes. But, yeah.
We were.
Yeah. You can say. Um, if there are no other questions, then I would entertain a motion.
I got it. Third moves to approve resolution number twenty-six, series of twenty twenty-four, a resolution awarding the Tabor Opera House rehabilitation of exterior envelope phase three construction contract, project identification twenty twenty-four dash O one to Spectrum general contractors.
Move on land seconds.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Pretender?
Yes.
Councilmember Lina?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmets?
Yes.
Councilmember Bess?
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, look, um, Spectrum's little packet in here looks really impressive. All right, let us move on to Raiders Market Rehabilitation COA, um. Sorry, I am lost in the vast number of pages in this packet.
It is page one sixty.
Okay. Um, I don't have a script for a COA, Hannah. Should I just? I have one for executive session. I don't have one for the COA. Can I, uh?
Did I memorize it?
I'm gonna have it memorized. All right. I'm gonna wait. Good evening. My name is Dana Green, and I am the mayor of the city of Leadville. This is a public hearing before city council to consider a certificate of appropriateness by the owners are here, right? Sorry, I'm flipping pages. Shannon and Jason Trust for, uh, rehabilitation of Raiders Market at two hundred East Sixth Street. Um, when the public hearing is opened, I will first attend to some preliminary housekeeping matters. I will then ask for staff to discuss the highlights of the staff report, followed by the applicant to make a brief presentation of his or her proposal, followed by public comments from members of the public in attendance. The applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal, uh, which is the applicant's opportunity to respond to any comments made by members of the public. After rebuttal, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing and allow council members an opportunity to ask questions. Once, uh, the public comment portion of the hearing is closed, we will not accept public comments unless it is response to questions posed by the council with the applicant and city staff. Staff will have an opportunity for clarification or rebuttal, which is the staff's opportunity to respond to any comments made by the applicant or members of the public. At the conclusion of our questioning, the council will deliberate and render a decision, which could include a continuation of the hearing. This public hearing is quasi judicial, which means that we have to follow certain procedural requirements to establish a record. For this reason, it is important that when you speak, you identify yourself and state your physical address. If you would like to submit written materials, please understand that the city will have to hold on to these materials for at least thirty days after city council renders its decision. Any questions about the public hearing procedure? Seeing none, I will now open the public hearing for two hundred East Sixth Street. Certificate of appropriateness for Raiders Market Rehabilitation, applicant?
Jason Shannon Trust.
Jason Shannon Trust. Sorry, I'm flipping between multiple pages here. Okay. Oh, no, I, I have that on. Okay. All right, at this time, I would like to ask city council members to disclose any expertise communication between yourselves and the applicants. Seeing none, will staff please present the report highlights?
Good evening, man. Council for the record, I'm Jake Mashon, planning director for the city of Leadville. So this is a COA that is drawn in front of the historic preservation commission voice. Uh, the HPC has been using a work session format, uh, to, um, initially see applications that the applicants are willing to come. So the applicants, uh, and their designers can get in front of the HPC, uh, for a work session, which is great. And then we'll get some initial feedback, which they were able to respond to, um, and come back to HPC for the formal public hearing, uh, and all will be heard you tonight. So the scope of work for this application, um, is an exterior and interior renovation. Um, so that would include a picture of the existing building on the screen. That would include essentially restoration of the original southern facade that remains. And that actually wraps all the way around to, uh, the corner as well. Uh, and there will be new siding because there's nonhistoric signs on the current building. And then a total reconstruction of this, uh, western wall, which is assumed to be nonhistoric. Um, you know, the window openings and the garage door. And, uh, we've not had any historic photos of this building that aid us in kind of determination of anything with this western wall. Uh, the scope of work also on the exterior includes a, uh, you can see how there's a slope roof, um, on the existing building. The proposal includes with that western wall, additional parapet that matches the height of the original, um, southern wall and southwestern corner. Um, so the HPC, uh, is recommending to approve this project. Um, there was a full review of the design standards, uh, that's included in your packet. There are, uh, we have ten design standards that apply in our code, uh, to this project. Those are modeled after the Secretary of Interior's, the federal secretary of interior standards, uh, and guidelines. And then there are also ten, um, Secretary of Interior SOI, uh, design standards and guidelines that are included in your packet. Um, the, the root meat of this, um, discussion was regarding this, uh, parapet wall being added above the western wall. And with its reconstruction and whether or not there was a loss of character of the building, um, losing its, uh, its northern, uh, down facing slope roof. And, uh, what we discussed at the HPC was that the, uh, and this was, this was staff's recommendation that the, um, the original southern wall, the southwestern corner of this building, um, are original, they're supposed to be restored. And, uh, staff is finding that is the, um, you know, contains the character defining features of this building. And so recognizing that that western wall is, uh, likely nonhistoric and that the, um, everything that is proposed on that western wall is proposing to keep the character of the original character defining features. Um, staff is recommending that it needs the design standards. The one condition, um, that HPC added staff has supported of, uh, was that on this western wall, there'd be some differentiation between, um, that, the, the western wall and the original portions of the, um, south, southwestern facade. And not wanting to design, um, those details, the, uh, HPC added a condition of approval that preparations of the building permit, um, the design team will spend a little more time using, uh, trim or kick plates, uh, uh, or some of their design detail that would receive, uh, staff approval prior to building permit to differentiate the essentially new from old. Um, so then still keeping the character, uh, maintaining those character defining features is compatible. But when someone takes a second look at this, at this building, um, that, you know, there's some detail that doesn't show up in the record because they can see in the photos. Uh, there's some dental work, um, that was, that exists on the original building. And so the recommendation is that, um, that there's, there are minor things that can be done to, for example, not continuing that dental work along that western wall, um, maybe some other things to, to keep the new part of the building, um, noticeably differed from the other, some, if someone, from the original, someone takes a second look. There are a lot of details included in your packet, um, that is the, the summary. Um, I think this is a really in- interesting project. This is proposed to be a, a restaurant and bar. Um, the building, um, probably had a fire, um, at one point. Um, and it appears to be detached from the brick wall that, uh, that is, uh, adjacent, only adjacent building to the east. Um, the northern wall of the building, uh, there's a survey included in your packet. The northern wall of the building actually enc- uh, encroaches slightly onto the northern property. Um, and so when they, when they, this is reconstructed, likely that wall will have to be, um, brought back just, just a bit to be within the property line. So when they're reconstructing, it's not, um, continuing that encroachment onto the, um, onto the David property. Uh, there's some sandmore maps that are included in your packet that are, um, I find kind of interesting. We always try to include these in the evaluation of these projects. Um, they're on page one seventy one of your packet, and you can kind of see how the building uh, progressed over time. It appears to have been constructed in the eighteen eighties at some point. Um, show them the eighteen eighty six sandmore mound approximately its current foot- footprint. And over time, as the, um, building changed uses from a grocery and meat store, um, to being baked in and a savior's office. Um, you can see that, I think it's this one, and eighteen ninety five sandmore mound showed that the building was actually connected with the structure, um, which is, that X mark means it was a stable. Uh, it was connected to a stable, um, on, uh, the northern side. And at some point, that roof was, uh, removed and the stable existed, and then dwelling was constructed, um, to the north. So lots of changes over time, just like, you know, the building in town. Um, and this will be the latest change to the building to convert to a restaurant bar use, uh, restoring both the interior and exterior. Uh, like I said, all the other details are included in your packet. I can take any questions for staff. And I know that the, I believe the applicants are online, um, to answer any questions.
Let's, um, let's do questions for staff first, if there are any, before we take an applicant, um, presentation. Anybody having questions for Mr. Mashon? Okay. Well, then I would like to invite the applicants, um, to give a presentation on this project. I can, I can see you speaking, Shannon. I, I think you're muted.
I believe DM from Shape Architecture is, uh, on the call and is prepared to speak on our behalf.
Okay.
If not, and I think, uh, Jason and I could probably pull something off.
Yeah, I can speak on your behalf, um, if that's okay. Yeah, of course. Um, so I'm DM with Shape Architecture, we're the architecture firm working on this project. Um, and yeah, like Chip and said, we worked with HPC exclusively on this project, working at ways that, you know, adhere into HPC because we do really care about the historic nature of this building and how it integrates with the rest of the, with Main Street. Um, and so fifteen hundred square feet, it used to be Meat Market, uh, Raiders Meat Market, as well as a grocery store. And we love the history of this building. We want to create, um, from Shannon and Jason's point of view, create another kind of vibrant the pos- pos- spot for, um, downtown Leadville, this kind of bar, restaurant, small, a place that's unique, that everyone can gather. That's still part of downtown Leadville, but just slightly off of the main path, fifteen hundred square feet, a small bar and tables, and then a kitchen in the back. Um, yeah, I hope that answers the question. I don't know if I missed anything else, Shannon and Jason, feel free to add on to that.
I'm thinking, um, happy to, uh, talk a little bit about the concept, just so it, it's clear. Um, we intend to have an elevated cocktail bar with a full service restaurant seating of about forty-five to fifty people, um, inside. And as you can see, we plan to have outdoor seating as well in the, uh, the great Leadville, uh, weather months, uh, which are a few. Uh, but we can, we can do it for sure. And, um, and Jason and I are, uh, residents of Leadville and moved to, uh, Leadville in twenty twenty and would love to be part of, um, or a greater part of this community and, and invest in, in Leadville, uh, in this way. Um, so we hope that the, uh, city council agrees and, and, uh, and approves this. Thank you. Jason, did you want to say anything?
Does anyone?
You covered, you covered that, Shannon. We also have a couple of, uh, locals as well that are working on this project with us. So we're excited to also provide some more, uh, employment for the, the local community, obviously. And we just think this would be a great addition, uh, to sort of build out an area of the town that doesn't really have a ton of, uh, additional commercial. I know this has been zone, you know, transitional commercial, so it's nice to kind of find that corner building and kind of form an anchor. So we're looking forward to that. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and along that note, Jason, I also like to add that I love that the built, you know, the, the fact that it's a commercial space restaurant just off of the Main Street, adding of this kind of a neighborhood bar aspect restaurant to the local community that Shannon and Jason and the team is trying to create.
Yeah, and, and to add to that, we, our intentions, um, are not to be some extremely late night type of place. Um, we know that there are, you know, residents around. This isn't going to be a, a loud, um, boisterous, uh, sort of establishment. So that's part of it too, just understanding where we, where we sit, some of the outdoor seating, as you may see it. Uh, that, that's just for rendering. Uh, there's obviously a whole slew of other uh, challenges we'd have to go through to make sure that that is appropriate. Um, but that's just for visual, um, use. And FYI, we're at six twenty-three East Eleventh Street.
That's right. Jason and Shannon, six twenty-three, East Eleventh. Forgot to introduce myself first. Um, yeah, and, and we do expect that the environment, um, inside will be intimate. Um, it's not a big place. This is a, a gathering, uh, for locals and a place for the many visitors that come to Leadville, um, to, to have, um, as an option for eating and drinking.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
I have one. It doesn't, it doesn't seem big enough to house a commercial kitchen to support a restaurant to me. It's such a tiny space. I'm just curious what the floor plan is and where the kitchen would be.
The floor plan is actually in the packet. Um, if somebody could to, uh, get to that.
I just see the historic picture.
There it is.
Yeah.
DM, do you know the exact dimensions of the, the, uh, the kitchen?
Yeah, so the, the whole building is about fifteen hundred square feet. The kitchen and bar area is gonna take up about, um, eight hundred square feet of that. It is small, like you said, but, you know, we are working with a kitchen designer to try to squeeze everything in. Like Shannon and Jason say, it's not gonna be, you know, a big bar, crazy restaurant area. It is local, small eats and drinks.
Other questions for the applicant? Okay. What I'd like to do now is open the public comment portion of the meeting, um. See, I saw you raise your hand. If you would come up to the podium so we can hear you all.
Okay, so there's basically two, uh, issues here for me. Um, the planners, um, in front of, on the south end there, um, we talked about that at the HPC meeting. Um, Chase, uh, Chance, uh, Chip and said, uh, there was, that, that was a separate issue and they would have to apply for, um, uh, some kind of permit for that. But since Sixth Street, Sixth Street is going to be an economic corridor, I mean, a retail corridor, at least that was, was been proposed in the past for expansion, I would think that these planners would be in the way of parking and things like that. The other thing is the encroachment issue. At the prior meeting, um, staff, uh, more or less accepted the encroachment on the north side, as I recall. And now it seems that staff's reversed this position, saying that this should be, uh, go back to the property line. Um, this is a concern to me because I have encroachments on my property. And, um, I, I don't want them going back to the property line. So since these encroachments have been here for more than eighteen years, I think that, uh, that should be considered their property right there. Across the street from this place, we have some encroachments happening with the barbecue place where they're encroaching on the space of the, um, church where the garage is. And we, we haven't seen to address that in a positive manner. So I would like to see the, the encroachment on the north end be certified as, uh, part of their property and them not have to, uh, retreat from whatever's been established here for more than eighteen years. And thank you kindly.
There any other public comment regarding this application in the room? Or online? Hannah, you'll have to help me see online since with the presentation, all the pictures are all squished up. Seeing no further public comment, I would entertain a motion to close the public input portion of this public hearing.
Yes, please to close the public comment portion of this public hearing.
Five seconds.
Oh, in favor? Hi. Thank you. Okay, um. Staff, is there any, any response to the public comment that you'd like to?
By the staff's spot for your encouragement.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the, the legal matter of the existing legal non-conforming building approaching on native property is not the subject of this application. So this is a certificate of appropriateness application for compliance with store design standards. Um, so the, the, where a encroachment issue would be res- uh resolved would be that if. Uh, if you were proposing a new encroachment, proposing to further um the degree of non-conformity of a encroachment onto a native property. That would be a zoning issue, which would require uh, which would require that issue to be resolved. Um, and this, in this case of the certificate of appropriateness, that there, the applicant um is proposing. To potentially remove that encroachment um and uh and reduce the non-conformity. Um, so although it's not subject to this application that we have in front of you. Um, it would be something that would potentially be approval through a site plan um and it will be for an application.
Thank you. Does the applicant have or the um architectural firm DM have anything to respond to the public comment?
I do not.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, let's move on. Um, let's move on to discussions. Um, I, I had a question earlier that I, that I forgot to ask, and that is in this, in the current. Um, as it currently exists, there's a large fire hydrant right at the corner. Um, what happens to that? And what sorts of arrangements have to be made to, to remove that since it's not in the final proposed pictures?
Um, I can answer a little bit to that. We did take a walkthrough with the Fire Marshal Steve Boyle um earlier on the process. Um, that is something, you know, it isn't in the rendering, but it is there. We plan to keep it there unless he tells us otherwise, but we will be working with Steve Boyle on that and making sure that. Everything is up to code.
Thank you.
That would be part of the application process anyway, is right.
I just wondered, cause it kind of vanished in the pictures. Okay. Any other discussion?
I'm inclined to approve it based on the findings of staff and HPC.
Me as well.
I really like it.
Thanks. I love the, that. Um, to indigorate just a block of hoof Harrison in that area with another gathering space is great.
I think it's a very attractive design. It'll be a benefit to the community, I think. And um, as has already been mentioned, it'll be nice to see some commercial activity off of Harrison.
Any other comments? Well then, I would entertain a motion.
Our moves, the city council approved the Schrader's Market Rehabilitation PL twenty twenty-four zero one zero. Located at two hundred E-sixth Street, along with the attached findings and the conditions of approval.
I'll do another five seconds.
Roll call please.
Councilor Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Green?
Yes.
That's number in the way out?
Yes.
Mayor for time sorry?
Yes.
That's number the best?
Yes.
That's number Shans?
Yes.
All right, very good. Well, congratulations. I'm so looking forward to see what comes of this.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. So are we.
All right, in that case, I will close the public hearing. At eight sixteen.
Mayor, I will, uh, in my department report at the next meeting, I'll be. I'm maybe trying to search for some feedback from the council regarding process for applications like this in the future. I like whether or not you'd like to continue with public hearing process if you just went through. Um, or as long as all the application perils included in your packet. Um, if that would be a consented item, just considering agenda links evening, you know, our, our meeting links, et cetera. Uh, so maybe just um food for thought and then I'll, I'll touch base on that um in two weeks.
Thank you. Okay, well, um, holy cow, we're getting a little ahead of schedule now. Uh, at this time, uh, we have on our agenda to go into executive session. Um, to do so, I will need a motion. And whoever wants to make that motion, if you would move to go into executive session. Executive session and reading this, like what exactly it's about on this sheet, I will pass it to you.
And can we get a bathroom break during or?
Um. You can move to go into bathroom break, followed by executive session pursuant to CRS.
Okay. Our moves to go into bathroom break. And executive session, executive session pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E. To determine positions relative to the negotiation of a potential intergovernmental agreement with Lake County. For law enforcement services, developing a strategy for such negotiations and instructing negotiators.
Blue on that seconds.
Roll call please.
That's number seven?
Yes.
That's number best?
Yes.
Mayor Green?
Yes.
That's number in the way out?
Yes.
That's number ten?
Yes.
Mayor for time five?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna proceed upstairs to executive session. And then for those of you online who will be complaining, Hannah will make a break in that room.
And just, just for um clarification, we have our city attorneys, Ms. Laboon and Ms. Graham. And if agreeable, uh, our administrative, new administrative assistant, Sarah Bushman, if she would like to join.
I'm gonna hop off and let Hillary take this one. Um.
Yeah, and I'm on. I don't know if you can see, but I'm on by phone.
All right. Okay, we have everybody back on? And can we? Is it?
What's that?
My computer is black.
That's fantastic. Computer has thrown a number of curveballs tonight.
Problem for the.
Okay, uh, is the recording back on for?
Yeah.
All right, the time is now twenty-one, twenty-two, two, sorry, nine twenty-two. Um, and the executive session has been concluded. If any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters is not included. In the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session. Or that any improper action incurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, please state your concerns now for the record. Hearing none, the executive session is adjourned and the regular. City council meeting is reopened at nine twenty-three, reopened just in time for public comments. Seeing none, we'll go on to mayor's report. All I have to say is, wow, if you miss the state of the community on April thirtieth. You're sad, cause that was really insane. We had seven amazing presentations from people surrounding uh, uh, or working on. Uh, housing and people working on childcare and uh including a presentation by our very own. Council member Best wearing his advocates and the bridge hat. That was very good and very, very enjoyable. Standing room only. Um, and the food was amazing. So let's do it again next year. The only other thing uh that I was gonna mention regarding strategic planning is that. Um, I am working with the Upper Arkansas Area Council of Governments. Um, to try to secure a mini grant to cover half of the strategic planner's fee. So I'll let you know if that works out. I'm optimistic. Council reports.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, Tim, you want to present the task force? No, I won't, but I'm happy to.
You can. All right, all right. Yeah, why don't you go first?
Okay, um, so we had our first um sales tax, uh, sales tax task force.
You gotta say that five times six.
Um, thank you. Um. It's um yesterday, actually. Um, and I think it went pretty well, honestly. Um, the people present um were uh Jane from, for PB Swims, uh Jeff Fiedler from the county. And unfortunately, Rafa, who was gonna be the business person, um, was unable to um. Then he did show up to say that he can't attend moving forward, so we'll be looking for a new business person. Um, which we've identified a few. Um, we also, um, I guess I'll go through the agenda. Um, we talked about uh the scope of work. Um. We really want to focus on having this be a coordinated bill. We don't want one party doing one thing, one party doing another. So a lot of the focus was how can we bring, you know, PB Swims on board? And um, how can we bring the county on? Um, which I think was pretty fruitful, um, so much so that it sounded like Jeff was potentially gonna float the idea of this being a county-wide tax. Instead of just a state tax, which I think is great. Um, I think uh more towards the content of it. Um, you know, we identified that PB Swims will, regardless of what we do, um, run a bill. Um, if it doesn't include some type of carve-out for the pool, then they will run their own bill. If the does include some type of carve-out for the pool, they're willing to step back from that process. So um, we were able to identify that and come to an agreement that that is something that we will include in this task force. Outside of that, the amount, the percentage amount as to how high it goes and what's in it is still up for discussion. And we're hoping to include actually up to seven people and we're stopping at seven. Um, specifically identifying uh Lauren Barrett and a few other community members who would have been very important key members to include. Um, most of whom have set note by the. Which we'll have to, we'll circle back and find new ones then. Um. So we also came up with a timeline, of course, hearing that the, the twenty twenty-four ballot is gonna be it. We really wanted this task force to really just focus on coming in. Into some type of planning for just this ballot. But we also identified that it would be helpful to have future discussions um as a city and county unify about um. Acts um and some type of strategy going forward, I think, is um what was identified. So I think overall it went pretty well. Um, if anyone has any questions about it.
I'm really excited that you guys pulled this off.
Yeah, I wanna emphasize the, something that's really come out. Um. In um, you know, bringing the county. Is this need for just a more general community-wide taxation strategy?
Hmm.
Um, that's obviously a longer and bigger discussion, but that um, I think that's gonna hopefully be really fruitful.
Also, I forgot to mention, uh, Tim is chairing the task force, so Tim will be the playperson, but I'm happy to have taken.
I don't wanna be speaking through Christian.
We'll work together. We'll work together on the.
Thank you, thank you, uh, task force both for taking this on. I appreciate the, the, you taking the laboring war and I, it sounds fantastic. Thank you also for including Lauren Barrett. I think she's a key person um to be involved in that, so um, I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, regardless if she's a voting member or not, I'd love to have her at this present, um, if nothing else, but yeah.
Yes. Other council reports?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, I wanna thank and congratulate the mayor. Um, Lake County Community Fund and the Herald for State of the Community. And I think it was particularly great to, to focus on. Needs of the community, that um, these are two areas that we've identified. That yes, there are, there are things to celebrate, but really there are, there are needs there that we need to do better on. And I wanted to highlight what I thought was the most important information to come out of the state of the community. Which is that the county having granted three hundred thousand dollars to Full Circle. For rental assistance, which in the housing supports world uh is categorized as homelessness prevention. Yeah, that that money is gone, three hundred thousand dollars. That was going towards rental assistance and mortgage assistance. It wasn't going to an emergency shelter, as Mr. Prestash noted. It wasn't going to um solve the problem. It's simply safety net, extrapolate that every year. That's a one point two million dollar need that was uncovered. Um, I know Full Circle's process, cause we worked with them. We took some clients that they could not help. They had very, um, they had a good process. Clients had to demonstrate me, they turned a lot of folks away. Um, some of whom probably were getting supports through our program or through C four. So I, I think that's the most important information that had come out of the state of the community. Because it just shows how. Much work we have to do and how much money this is gonna cost. This isn't even discussing trying to fix the housing crisis, the affordable housing or lower compound or any of those solutions. This is simply a safety net. One point two million dollars, three hundred thousand dollars is gone. The needs aren't. These people still are going to be short on their rent. And um, I, I just want to uh highlight that because I think um, we really need a community call-up. For um, to rally this cause and sort of get our stuff together for figuring out how we're gonna help. From those vulnerable citizens. Thanks.
Yeah, uh, just to add on to that, um, the normal. That would be, um. The homelessness in our community, even with these safety nets has been significantly um through the wintertime. Uh, this isn't new, but of, um, at C four, we are currently working actively, working with twelve people who live in North Bay. Um, or can, um, in our community. And that is not by any means like a full list of people. There's just people who all. So it's important to recognize that if that's happening in the winter. Now the hell of a summer, um, and it's gonna be much more expansive. And the fact that had these services not been provided to these people, there's a chance that someone might have died, like legitimately. Um, so it's. I would hate for us to start planning or start taking this seriously when we get to the point to where there's reported death. But it's genuinely feel like that's the path we're heading down and we haven't come up with the time or the effort to sit down. or the effort to sit down as a county and a city to discuss this specific issue as a standalone issue. And I think that's an important thing that we have to do. And should be done before the start of next winter.
Do you have to comment briefly, Steve?
Okay, so I mentioned this, we used to be talking to a lot of people about it. This short-term rentals thing is really impacting the community in many ways. Not only is it a local problem, a regional problem or a national problem, it's becoming a world. This one in Hawaii where the fire occurred, that is all there for the rest of it is STRs. And then the paper had marked, I think it was the same day, on Madrid, Spain has the same problem. The person that burke in Madrid can't live there because foreign investment owns those properties and their children pay us. So I think we have to start basing out the short-term rent by year. Declare a state emergency on that real house.
Other council reports?
On May fourteenth, the Community Center Steering Committee will be meeting. And I am on that. Are other council members on that? Steering Committee for the
Community Center?
Community Center.
With Laura Barrett?
Yeah. May fourteenth. I just, and one of the reasons I ask is if we need to notice that meeting, if there would be more council members in attendance.
I do plan.
Okay, if there's just two of us, I don't think.
Sorry, I had tentatively planned to attend on May fourteenth, not necessarily as a member, but just to learn more about what's happening. I haven't had a chance to meet with Lauren yet, but I plan to, I think next week.
Okay, you know, maybe we, for stuff like that, we could start just posting like they do with the county, like council members may attend this thing. And then we, you know, if we do find areas of common interest where possibly more than two of us may gather.
Yeah. We can certainly do that. And I think I, I vaguely remember discussing that with Ms. Barrett that if we had that many council members there, we could just go ahead and notice the meeting because I think she was worried about that. And I said, it's easily solvable.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm really looking forward to that as well, another good collaborative effort underway.
Okay, other council reports?
I've got a quick one. I'm attending the Main Streets Conference this week. And it's been really interesting to listen to presentations from around the country from some communities similar to ours in terms of size, what their main street programs are doing, some of the issues faced by the communities. I won't go into any detail tonight, but as I pull my notes together, I'll give a quick summary of some of the things I've learned this week. Also making progress slowly, stepwise on the City Hall Grant Application with the State Historic Preservation Office. Have a meeting set up with the architect for May thirtieth in the afternoon. I think it's a Thursday afternoon from three to five at City Hall. Just to walk through the building and refresh basically the site assessment that was done in twenty nineteen. So that I'll have some more current information to put into the grant application. So again, that'll be on Thursday, May thirtieth at three. If anybody wants to join in, Councilmember Edwards has agreed to help manage any eventual grant that's awarded to the city, which could be very beneficial because I think we can charge fifteen percent of our time managing the grant against our match. So that would, that would be very positive for the city. That's all I have.
Fantastic. Anything else? I think everybody's practically, everybody's talked. Come on, Tim. Okay, let's go. Public meetings planner. You may have noticed, we did not have a Laura Board meeting on the second. Somehow we've gotta fix that. It's only the even months.
Yeah, that would be nice too.
I noticed, Lori, I noticed that those were also noticed in the paper under like community events, community events that they're still putting in the Laura every single month.
We have nothing next week.
We have nothing next week.
And it's that weird month where P and Z usually is in the off weeks, but it's, it's together with.
So when is the next Laura meeting?
In June, it is June sixth. And I will be here.
I'll be there.
Yes. Okay. Anything else? Other comments? I know it's not on here now, but the, nope, never mind. I just, it's too late. I'm no longer thinking clearly. In that case, if there's no other comments, it is nine thirty nine. Council meeting is adjourned. So much.